Ahead.
Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Who's called the roll, Nora?
Mr. Kaplan.
Yes.
Mr. Curry.
Yes.
Mr. Ready.
Present.
Snyder.
Here.
Mr. Willans.
Here.
Chairman Ira Kane.
Present.
We also have our board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Present.
Board engineer, Mr. Holloway, and our board attorney, Mr. King.
Nora, have you heard from Bernie?
Yeah, he let me know late today that he won't be coming.
But he never called me to, you know, he never, he never answered.
Yeah, no.
Okay.
Let's give a visit to the flag of the United States of America and to the public who stands one nation under God, indivisible, and created in a just.
He said he might not be able to make a meeting for the rest of the year. I'll give him a call.
Okay.
Still bad. Okay, at this point in this evening's meeting, is there any member of the public has any business to be brought to this board that is not on this evening's agenda? Hear none, seen none. We have some correspondence. Okay, from Mr. O'Neil requesting. A one-year extension, you, I don't even remember this. What is this? What was this? Old Ford Pond Developers?
Yeah.
Old Dover Road, okay, okay, all right, yes, I knew it, now, I thought it was a. Any problems, any questions, any discussion on this?
One year, that's okay.
You're allowed to give what, two one-year extensions?
Well, they memorialized it in '20, this is already two years later.
No, you get two years.
Oh, you get two years, okay.
Before you're approval, then you can stretch it out.
So, do I have a motion to extend the period from September 2, 2022 to September 2, 2023?
So moved, Snyder.
Second, ready.
Any discussion? All in favor? Anyone opposed?
Yeah, I mean, do we have a reason why? I mean, I don't have the correspondence, does anybody else?
Chairman and the attorney have the correspondence.
Okay.
You want me to read it?
It would be nice. I'm making the motion, it would be nice I know the reason.
Dear Chairman Ira Kane and members of the board, this officer represents Ford Pond Developers LLC, which received preliminary and final major subdivision approval by resolution memorialized September 2, 2022. The approval presented to NJSA 4055-D dash 52-A, we request the approval be extended for a period of one year from September 2, 2022 to September 2, 2023. Please advise when this matter will be on the board's agenda for consideration. Thank you for your anticipated cooperation. So there's no.
There's no reason.
No reason.
Is there necessarily that there may be a reason for?
No, they're simple requests like this. No, they're entitled to the.
Okay.
Extension.
And the attorney's here, can he address it, or no, he's not willing to?
He's come.
Hi, Joe.
Hello, everyone, Joseph O'Neil for the applicant. We're making this request in conformance with the statute, and the reasoning has to do with the pandemic and the economic fallout from the pandemic. There's been a shortage of building materials and the like, which has seriously affected this project. The Old Dover Road project is also tangentially part of the affordable housing settlement, so it is a critical development as part of the town's affordable housing plan. So because of those economic impacts, we're making this request.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. That was very informative, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. We have some resolutions.
GTP acquisition of St. Christopher is not ready yet.
Okay, so we have 2221, 2243, 2246, 2247. I think they're all the same people.
They are.
Some are.
There's someone on the next.
Oh, there's some on the next page?
Yep.
Some are, well, not yet.
Some on the next page.
You have La Coaana, 2219 La Coaana Avenue.
Is that the same, oh, I'm sorry, here it is, okay.
And 2163 Chick-fil-A.
You know what, I didn't get the Chick-fil-A till late today, so I don't have it.
We have to separate that one.
Okay.
All right, so La Coaana Plaza, we can do? I don't have the, who can vote, though, I don't have that sheet.
There is some debate about that.
Excuse me?
There was some debate about that. I don't have the list, I don't have the list for who can vote on that one, anyway.
You don't have.
We have it here.
Do you have it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then I'm missing a page, that's all.
We're good. This is for, okay, so you want to separate La Coaana? Or you just don't vote?
Can someone read the La Coaanas to me? Let's do the La Coaana separately. Who can, who can vote on La Coaana?
Everybody but Curry.
Okay, so I have, did I, will someone move that, move that?
Oh, it's the same for all of them, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, same for all of them?
You could package it together.
Okay, so I repeat, 2221, 2243, 2246, 2247, and what is the number of La Coaana?
2219.
2219. Will somebody move those five?
So moved. Second, Snyder.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willans.
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes. Results of those resolutions pass. So we did not do Chick-fil-A and we did not do GTP.
Chick-fil-A is ready.
Chick-fil-A ready, yeah, ready. I thought we didn't speak that.
Nora, do you?
You know what, I had it on the agenda, but I didn't receive it until late, and, you know, I didn't pull the votes, so we'll do it next week.
Okay, no problem. Any other business, Nora?
No other.
Okay, let's go into the applications for tonight. First application, 2224, Mary Ellen Simpson, 14 Brentwood Drive, C variance to legalize an existing fire pit and shed. Are you here? Oh, come on up.
Are you both going to testify?
Yes.
Okay, could you raise your right hands? And you swear a firm testimony you're about to give before the board's true self you got? And for the record, can you state your name?
Telly.
Okay, Telly, T-E-L-L-Y?
K-E-L-Y.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
You're sworn in, you can have a seat.
Why are you here? Did you reply for a permit and rejected, or?
No, we had an existing deck that was rotting off of our house, so I had done some pavers in the back, took the deck down, and added pavers around the fire pit, which those pavers are now over setback line.
Would somebody come out and inspect this, or, excuse me, did somebody in the town come out and inspect it?
Yes, township engineer was out there.
Did you get a permit in order to put pavers around the fire pit?
No, because I was replacing what was existing.
And you know why the township engineer?
Because my neighbor called.
Code enforcement, this is a code enforcement case.
I thought you loved neighbors. Okay, so you came here because, then the engineer, and there's another question from him, what are lean-tos? Got a couple of them.
I'm a general contractor, so I have one on the side of the house that I store material in, and then there's one in the back where I store firewood.
So they're like three-wall sheds?
Yeah.
When you say you store material on the one side next to your house, what's that piece of stuff?
Wood, ladders, like that.
Doesn't look that big. Okay. I guess the shed in the front yard, was that there, or did you put it there?
We put that there years ago, gotta be over 10, 12 years ago.
You put it in?
Yeah.
And it was right next, the next-door neighbor had one right there, too?
Yes.
Okay.
To actually back up on each other.
The same neighbor that called? Okay, got it.
Is that the shed in question?
Excuse me?
Is that the shed in question with the set?
I'm not sure which shed is in question, I'll tell you.
Where's your other shed?
There's no other shed.
Then that shed is in question.
And on the side.
And the lean-tos, they don't fall out, I don't, what are they made of? Are they wood-sided, they have roots on them?
One has, yes, they both have roots on it, and neighbors, are three-sided.
Because both of them kind of go across your property line a little bit, looks like it's sort of. And the engineer didn't say anything about those when he talked to you, only the fire pit?
Correct, and it wasn't even the fire pit, it was the fact that the pavers around it are within the setback.
Yeah.
So the shed is alongside your driveway, is that correct?
Yes.
And it's basically in the front, left-hand side of your property?
Yes, it is.
It looks like it's a significant setback from the, yeah, so your only, your only issue there is the side yard, six feet versus 10 feet. Is the neighbor's shed still there?
Yes.
So you're not blocking anything of his view, because he's going to see his shed first.
No, not at all.
Can you give your guess of how long you had it there? 10 years, 15?
It's over 10 years.
How long you had the house?
Were there 17 years.
So where is this six-foot-high solid fence that you also have on here, but it's not on the proposed, allowed, but you want us to legalize a six-foot-high solid fence? 624, right?
I don't see that.
It's in the notes.
It's in the notes.
You're on the wrong application.
Yeah, that's not.
No, I saw it.
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry, correct.
Oh, in the bottom, okay.
Is the six-foot fence fronting Brentwood Drive?
Yes.
So that is a six-foot fence fronting, fronting the street.
It says it's chain link.
No, 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 it's, it's in the backyard, right by the fire pit.
Well, that's not a variance.
No, that's not a variance. I'm reading, you're applying to legalize a six-foot-high solid fence, okay? Where is that six-foot-high solid fence?
Is it on the left side of the property?
Oh, I see it, yeah.
I think it's right here.
It says a wood fence.
It says wood.
Oh, that, that was an existing fence that I've just replaced.
But that's not a variance.
No, it's not.
No. Why is it on here?
You didn't get a permit to replace it.
It's just that way, but it was existing, so I just took it out and put it exactly back where it was, and it's all on my property.
That doesn't always mean anything.
Well, no, it's to make sure it was within my property.
I mean, I don't, I don't see that.
So if the board approves this, you'll get a fence.
You know, looking at your diagram and, you've got a hu, a big piece of property, you're in an R3 zone, what's the, how many square feet is this, I can't even tell.
He's just a little over.
A little over, you don't have a pool or anything like that, do you, just a paper patio?
Correct, no pool.
It, it doesn't seem like there's anything of any consequence here. Just to make sure I understand, Mr. Chairman, you got, you put on the house for a while?
Yes.
You replaced stuff that was rotting or falling apart with exactly the same dimensions?
Yes.
And because you replaced what was exactly there, you didn't feel you needed a permit?
Correct.
Then when they came out and said, you're, you're encroaching, you need to get this legalized to be able to do that, to be approved, is that correct? That's why you're here?
Yes.
The fire pit was expanded.
Yes.
So that's what?
The fire pit itself was in place, I put pavers around it, and I was told that the pavers are within the setback, and that's why I.
And you didn't get a permit for your wood fence replacement?
Okay.
Neighbors have no complaints with fire pit, but with the pavers, they have complaint?
No.
You didn't say a pool, basically, who gets a fence?
The engineer, Navo, says he has no objections to this, so I think so we move on.
Any other questions by the board?
No.
Any members of the public have any questions of these witnesses on the testimony given? I hear none, seen none, there's nothing else you'd like to add, right?
No, sir.
Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application? I hear none, seen none. Someone make a quick statement, and then I'll go to a resolution, please. We took care of the engineer's report, right?
Yeah, this is a reasonable request, I am in favor of.
So in frame of resolution?
Application 22:24, Mary Ellen Simpson, 14 Brentwood Drive, block 168, lot 58, R3, we grant a C variance to legalize an existing fire pit and shed contrary to 430-10C and section 430-35, column 9.
Second. Any discussion, Nora, call the roll.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Patty.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willans.
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes. Results of variances are granted, we will memorialize this, I mean, obviously, you don't need a permit to get started, because the work's already done, but you'll get your paperwork, and then you can proceed from there. Okay, okay, good luck, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, good time.
Let's call application 2230, Chad Hembry, 578 Lakeshore Drive, C variance to construct an open duck with landing, open deck with landing and stairs, entranceway, no roof, stairs to the rear, and stairs to the front, et cetera.
So you raise your right hand, you swear a firm testimony you're about to give before the board's true self you got?
Yes.
And for the record, you're the owner of the subject property?
Yes.
All right, you can have a seat, thank you.
Side yard, you're looking for a zero setback on the side yard?
Yeah, the side, that's the front porch, because right now, currently, what we have is, our porch, it's not even wide enough for our storm door to open up fully, it opens up three-fourths of the way, and also the stairs, we have a split level, and instead of the split level longways facing the street, it's.
Front to back?
Yeah, it's, it's longways, it, it's kind of awkward, and so the steps face the backyard, so when you come from the street, you kind of have to walk back and then come up, and it's just really awkward, so we just want to have a space where we can open up our door fully, and just be more, you know, welcoming, and have better.
This is Lakeshore Drive in Port Seven, right?
Really want to talk about.
Yeah, not Lake Iwatha.
Have you seen the engineer's report?
Yeah.
Township engineer's report?
Yes, about the drainage?
Yes.
Yes.
Have you met with them?
No, I left them a message.
Does this property, is it flat, is it sloped forward, backward, is it forward to the street? It's flat?
Yes.
I, we've had a couple cases where we've had impervious coverage variances, and they always came back to having a positive report from the township engineer, or that it was feasible to address the coverage. And I think you might want to discuss with the applicant, meet with the township engineer, so that we don't go forward, and all of a sudden you can't.
Right.
Comply with him, you're going to be back here again.
Yep.
Okay.
So I think you want to make sure the horse is in front of the wagon.
Okay.
You know, if you look at his report, you already exceed the impervious coverage.
Right.
And he's, he's asking for seepage pits or dry wells. Are you familiar with this? You know, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, and like Mr. Chadwick said, I don't know if you want to go ahead tonight without a comprehensive plan as to how you're going to do this, that he's going to approve, because we, you know, if the, if the town engineer is not happy, you know, we, it's difficult for us to proceed and contradict what he's asking for. Can we just, can I just?
See, your biggest problem is if he comes up with a plan that becomes so expensive, you may want to rethink how much deck or whatever you have, or some way of cutting back on the impervious surface.
Right.
Because it, it would be all guessing to try to go forward now.
There would be open space under the deck, right? It'd be dirt under her.
Dirt, I mean, we have rocks.
Okay, one thing to do is to have a deck with a space between the boards, so that you can drain, not, not use interlocking, don't use tongue and groove or anything like that, but to use a space so that, you know, when you come back and tell us, well, you know, there's going to be some mitigation here because of the way we construct the deck.
Yeah.
I mean, are you agreeable to what we're saying?
Yeah, absolutely, that actually is a pending one, that we would be using some spacing for, for each board, and rain would be able to fall through.
Yeah, like Mr. Chadwick said, it might be, you know, you might find out the additional expense is going to be, you're going to have to rethink some of these things. When can we carry this to, Nora? We don't have any seven o'clock's left, do we?
No.
Okay. You haven't done any of this work yet?
No, none of this work is begun.
Put them on December 14th.
December 14th? Do you think you can have, it's two months, do you think you can have your ducks in a row by then?
Sure.
Okay, sorry to push you off, but we want to do it right, and make it as painless as possible for you.
His wife would like to speak.
You're going to have to get sworn in if you want to speak.
Ma'am, you don't have to raise your right hand.
Raise your baby.
And you swear a firm testimony you're about to provide is true self you got, and you're the owner of this property. Could you just state your name for the record?
Nancy Rascalahembray.
Thank you, ma'am.
You got to use the microphone.
Oh, sorry, Nancy Rascalahembray. Do I, can we, can we get it approved since if it were to, if the engineer says it needs to be smaller, we get, try to get it approved tonight, and then if it's smaller, it's smaller?
We don't have enough information to approve it tonight, that's the problem. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
We'd like you to have the deck the size that you want, that's, you know, that's, that's our goal, you can't take the microphone, I'm sorry.
If it boils down to, we don't know what the engineer's going to require, and it might turn out to be so expensive that you want to revise your plan.
Okay.
Or it works, you can put it someplace, and you don't have to dig your old yard up, whatever, but we'd be just guessing now, and it would be worthless to get the approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, all right, so we're carrying this case to December 14th without further notice. Do we need an extension, Nora?
Um.
You're just going to have to agree to an extension of time.
I would say probably.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, Nora, we'll take care of that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thanks for your time.
Boy, you look like you got your hands full there.
Trying to build the decks so they can walk up.
Me, yeah.
It's going to get cold. December what, 14th, isn't it?
December 14th.
December 14th. Application 2244, Bond Benton, 130 Fox Hill Road, C variance to construct an open deck with stairs, good evening.
So raise your right hand, you swear a firm testimony you're about to give before the board's true self you got?
Yes.
And for the record, you're Bond Benton, and you're the owner of 130 Fox Hill Road?
Correct.
Thank you, sir, you're sworn up, seat.
Before we do anything else, someone will look at the engineer's report. Is there an engineer? There's not an engineer. I guess there's not, huh? Okay, so you're in an R3 zone, which is a 15,000-square-foot zone, and you only have 7,231 square feet, so you're a little shy on the minimum lock up, minimum lot size. You want a three-foot side yard setback and a 48.73 proposed impervious coverage, looks like your impervious coverage is only going up by half a percent, maybe a little, one and a half percent.
Yeah, there's no discount on that. Precipity doesn't give a discount on a pavement. Those pavers have grout in them, or they just pavers and sand?
There's, there, I think I would have to.
Does the water go through them?
No, no.
It runs off.
On the pavers, like, are we talking the?
The back, in the backyard.
In the backyard.
What's in between the pavers?
Like, pavers would be the beams on the deck, right?
We're talking about.
The pavers, the bricks that you've put into the ground.
Pavers are going to be underneath the deck?
Yeah, underneath the deck, right?
So you're, so you, he's not, he's not in addition to the pavers, he's putting the deck over, is that what I understand?
Well, it, it looks like you're just extending your proposed deck over steps and to an existing wood deck that's smaller. You're not putting your deck over pavers.
No, no, no.
Okay.
We had to get rid of the old one, because it was actually unsafe, it was about to collapse.
So there's no, so it's, it's going to be grass that you're putting this wooden deck over?
Yes.
It's raised?
Yeah.
How many feet off the ground is it raised?
It is raised. Trying to look at the previous deck, the previous, the previous sort of stairs and deck that were there.
How many feet? How many steps? How many steps up to this new, new deck? Four?
I'd say five or six.
It's.
So it's only 132-square-foot thick?
Yeah. 36 inches, actual feet of the stairs. Previous one was installed in 2012, so I'm looking for the height off the ground.
Has any of this been done?
We started work, our contractor assured us that since this was the replacement to a decrepit one, we were good, we apparently were not, and someone called, and so.
Who told you you were not?
The contractor had said that we're replacing the dangerous deck, like this was not going to support weight.
I got it, yeah.
But he said that, that this replacement with the modest increase, he, he didn't advise permit, and we kind of went with that. We're very new to the area, I'm so sorry.
And then what happened?
We believe, you know, I'm fairly certain a neighbor kind of called out of concern, and they, and we got a stop work notice on it, and we stopped it there, and that's, and we want to be absolutely equal, so, any questions you might have?
So the deck that comes out the back door, so you're like a platform, is that up, is that done?
That portion of it is done, we have no rails, no stairs, no lice, none of that.
Okay, then how about the, the other one you're replacing?
We're just, that's the only, that's, this deck's the only project that we have.
Oh, okay.
It's just setback on.
Yeah, so the, the old deck is, it looks a lot smaller than the newer deck.
Yeah.
So they increased the size of the deck, and it, it looks like on the new deck, the stairs are going into the backyard.
Yes.
Where they were going from the pavers into the old deck before.
Yes, yeah.
Looks like your fence is a little off your property line, isn't it? Is that your fence or your neighbor's fence? Is that your fence or your neighbor's fence?
We're not sure. We heard about an easement, and there's been discussion with our neighbors. We would absolutely love some clarification on it, but yeah, that is a concern.